...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening here tonight. At this time...
I'm loud. Under the provisions of the Public Meeting Law of the state of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Tuesday, October 8th, 2019, at the Administration Center. At 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were sent to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipality schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Could I have a recommendation, please, to adopt the agenda as posted?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Could I have a roll call vote, please? Madam Assistant Secretary?
Mrs. Ponder?
Aye.
Mrs. Hogshead?
Aye.
Mr. Ebert?
Aye.
Assistant Secretary votes aye.
Each month, the Communication Team presents a short video of the district highlights and successes. At this time, could we please have the video?
20th, bonding together and working as a team on a canoe ride. The brothers canoed from Riverview Drive all the way to the riverfront downtown St. Louis. In the beginning, there was a lot of fear, but the brothers worked together to conquer their fears and reach the arch. A big thanks to Big Money Adventures and the Gateway Arch National Park Service for making this possible. Students at Combs Elementary School had the opportunity to meet author and speaker Raina Teljemeyer when she visited the school. Teljemeyer is a multi-award-winning author, has a current New York Times bestseller, and had the most books sold in the U.S. during the week of September 29th. She spoke words of empowerment to students and chronicled her journey to becoming a graphic novelist. Teljemeyer delighted the students by making a graphic in which they suggested the visuals. All students received a copy of Teljemeyer's latest New York Times bestselling book, Guts. Sixth graders at Johnson-Wabash attended Camp Little Creek last month to develop relationships with fellow students and staff. Through this one-day camp experience, students at JW worked as a team while participating in various structured activities that required them to persevere through certain experiences and to advocate new ideas to meet personal and team goals. Some of the activities included storytelling, working together to complete low ropes courses, and designing banners for their teams. Research has shown that building strong relationships with students is a vital part of the educational process. The staff at Johnson-Wabash focused on building and strengthening those bonds. More activities that encourage teamwork, perseverance through tasks, and advocating for self and others will be implemented throughout the school year.
A nice video. I did forget to announce that Dr. Graves is not here tonight for a personal religious holiday, and that this evening, Dr. Thurman was rushed to the hospital, so we all want to keep her in our thoughts and prayers. So just to let you all know that. And of course, she would be excused. So at this time, we have MSBA Board Update. Do we have that film?
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of October. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the recent 2019 MSBA Annual Conference, where nearly 1,200 school board members and administrators gathered to learn the latest on issues having an impact on their local school districts and to improve their leadership skills. Attendees had the opportunity to participate in more than 120 breakout sessions and workshops, presented mostly by leaders from school districts throughout the state. Among the keynote speakers at the event was bestselling author, social entrepreneur, and decorated combat veteran Wes Moore, who thanked school board members for choosing to serve children.
And I am grateful for the fact that there are people who are willing to line up with my wife and I and say, "We will fight for your children as if they were ours." That means something to me as a parent. That you're willing to stand in the gap even when you don't have to. That you're willing to understand the realization that you, every day, are fighting for kids, many of whom you will never even meet them. Many of whom you'll never even know their names. But you fight every day for the hope of them. You fight every day for their pathways, as if they were your own. And that's meaningful.
Standing in the gap, by the way, has been the theme this year for MSBA's president, Rhonda Gilstrap, of the Blue Springs Board of Education. Among his many accomplishments, Wes Moore is the Chief Executive Officer of the Robinhood Foundation, one of the nation's largest foundations aimed at alleviating poverty.
We have a very clear focus with our organization that we will fight for and we will serve for children and families who are coming up in poverty and create real pathways for sustainable economic mobility. And the thing that I'm very clear about is quantitatively and historically, there's never been anything that's been able to show a long-term sustainable economic mobility for a family like increases in educational assets. Nothing.
Moore told school board members and administrators attending the conference, "Their advocacy for children is real and meaningful." Also speaking at this year's annual conference was Governor Mike Parson, who challenged board members and administrators to work with him to figure out ways to do a better job of paying teachers adequately.
But we have to do something with the funding situation for the teachers in this state. There is no way the direction Missouri is headed right now with the economic development engine that we have in this state, with the workforce development pieces we got. We cannot keep and to expect to perform when we're paying our teachers 48th in the nation in this state, when we're starting to move up the ladder and other things. If we don't do a better job in that, there will be consequences to that. And that's just a fact.
Parson added, "Every community in Missouri should have the ability to offer voluntary early childhood education programs." Missouri's 2020 Teacher of the Year is Melissa Grandal, an English-language arts teacher at Fordland High School near Springfield. She told an audience at the annual conference, "Missouri has outstanding teachers, but many feel overwhelmed and frustrated that they are not doing enough for their students who struggle to break the cycle of poverty."
I ask you to support your teachers, and I know that you do, but I'm asking you to support your teachers, to talk to them, to encourage them, to find them and listen to them, find out what they need and what they believe. Teachers are a school's best resource, but so often, they feel isolated and underappreciated. And I ask you to make them part of the conversation, and I'm certain that you will be glad that you did.
Grandal will serve as Missouri's representative in the National Teacher of the Year program. The MSBA Delegate Assembly met during the annual conference to vote on the position statements that will form the basis of MSBA's advocacy work in the coming year. Among the new position statements approved by delegates are statements calling for funding to allow local school districts to identify and address safety and security concerns, and for increased accountability for charter schools. Every school board belonging to MSBA is eligible to send at least one voting delegate to MSBA's Delegate Assembly. One of the highlights of this year's annual conference was the Student Showcase, where students from 22 school districts were on hand to demonstrate skills gained through innovative programs offered in their districts. School board members and administrators had the opportunity to meet with the students and have them explain the unique programs offered by their school districts. The MSBA Annual Conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators, is on the move. MSBA President Rhonda Gilstrap announced at this year's event the decision by the MSBA Board of Directors to move the 2020 Annual Conference from the Lake of the Ozarks to Kansas City. The 2020 Annual Conference will be held from September 24th to 27th. You'll be receiving more information about the new location of the annual conference in the coming weeks. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
The Board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and, in keeping with District Policies 4054 and 4059 and Personnel Law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the Board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the Board President may clarify remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. At this time...
Shannon?
Shannon?
Shannon Haislett.
Shannon Haislett, would you like to come forward?
Oh, she said you didn't want to just go on. I'm sorry. And she was just...
Okay, you don't have to.
She's already going away.
Oh.
That's fine. Do not... Okay. I see. This one? Do not... She's... She... 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 Good evening. My name is Shannon Haislett. At last board meeting, I asked for some information in reference to the Parent Advisory Board in terms of what is... What are the actual guidelines to go by? And I was just looking for it to an email of some sort, but I did not receive it as of today, so I was just trying to do a follow-up in reference to that information. And also, the thought exchange, I don't know if you guys were aware, that many of us did not receive it. I found out about it from another parent. And so, it was kind of pressed for time with being able to submit something, but I didn't get to respond because it was closing. So I don't know if anyone else was in that boat besides me, but that's what happened. The end.
And we're sorry that you weren't able to... So Pamela Powell, School Conditions Support for Teachers.
I'm Pamela Powell. I have a student at Berkeley Elementary. The school conditions there are... Need some work. Every Monday morning, the school smells like a sewer backed up in it. I think it's more than just the toilets needing to be flushed. That's what we'll share with them. They also have a sinkhole in the middle of the front lawn and another sinkhole on the side when you turn into. So there are some issues there that need to be addressed. It seems like this particular school is slipping to the bottom. I'd like it to be raised up a little bit higher on the priority list. And also, already, the teachers are... The cracks are showing with the teachers. I don't know if it's like stress overwork, just children aren't acting right, but cracks are starting to show already. It's kind of early in the school year for that. And I was wondering if there could be some type of support given to them, especially those who are struggling to manage their classes. It's... For me, it's kind of frustrating because I have to do my work and then additional work and then the schoolwork, and it's... Some things are being left out, like as far as assignments. It's like minor things, but it's becoming cumbersome and it's becoming repetitive. And I'd like for the teachers to get some support with that. I also wanted to address how crowded some of the schools are. There are just a lot of students in there, a lot of families coming to these schools because of the restructuring that we have. And then you have our steam school where it's empty, you know? At one point, it was mentioned how it wasn't at its capacity with 400 students, or approximately 400 students. So now you have even less than that. So that school is definitely being underutilized. I'd like some clarity and some transparency with that decision that was made. On that note, the other thing that I have is, I did not stay for the last board meeting. But the previous one, I did notice that some of the board meetings... Board members were showing like little temper tantrums, and I would like for you all to like better conduct yourselves. Thank you.
So, Ms. Powell? Ms. Powell, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. O'Neill will get with you after this meeting. Terry, you want to raise your hand? And Dr. Kitson will also get with you after this meeting to talk about your concerns, and we appreciate you coming forward. And we have another card in the air, Judy. Just come on forward.
I'll get it for you.
You want to hand me the card, please? Thank you, ma'am. And at this time, Judy Shaw will be speaking.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much. I just assumed that I was going to turn that card in to Kevin and you would read it later. But last time I was here, you told me that Amy Cacciatore would get back with me and address my concern, and I've not heard from her. So that's basically what I wanted to say, is that I haven't heard anything.
When we call your name and ask you to speak with someone, would you please do it at the meeting? That was the purpose of what the Board had intended. So please do follow through because it's really important for our constituents to have their questions answered. Again, I apologize to both Ms. Powell and Ms. Shaw for that not getting clarified. Okay? All right. At this time, the portion of the meeting is allocated for the Board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to board members and the community. But first, I'd like to start with Dr. Sheila Powell. She's going to give us a wonderful update on what happened at Q.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good to see so many of you out tonight. I had the opportunity to attend the Q conference recently. I went with Dr. Davis and Dr. Graves. And Q stands for Council for Urban Boards of Education. And I first want to just thank my fellow board members and the community for allowing me what I consider to be an amazing opportunity. I've been in education now for over 20 years, and it was probably the best education conference I have been to, hands down. You had an opportunity to meet with board members from across the nation who are also serving children in urban districts who are facing a lot of the same things that we're facing. So you had an opportunity to hear about a lot of their best practices and just an opportunity to bring some of those things back. I wanted to mention a couple, a few of the sessions that I had a chance to attend. One was creating trauma-informed and culturally competent schools, walking the talk, addressing the equity value gap, school safety, how to protect student information in the cloud. And then, another one I attended was domestic minor sex trafficking policy and protocol. And so, to talk a little bit more about sex trafficking, that one in particular got me kind of fired up because Atlanta is doing a lot of phenomenal work in this area because they recognize that this is no longer a thing that is happening in a third-world country. It is happening right here in Missouri. And so I pulled the numbers for Missouri. In 2018, there were 178 human trafficking cases in Missouri alone. And so, my understanding from a national standpoint is that this has become a $32 billion industry and that every two and a half hours, a child is taken. Fifty percent of the people who are being trafficked are children. Over 90% are girls, and we know particularly that our LGBTQ youth who are of color are even more at risk. So that's an area where I'd love to see us as a district do more work to educate our children. What they shared was that because schools are not doing enough education around that topic, children are that much more at risk. So it's become one of those things that we have to start educating children about. So hopefully, we can do that. Also, it was a good experience because you got a chance to see black, brown, and white board members and superintendents having conversations about the work that has to be done to support our most vulnerable youth. There wasn't any concern about color or status or any of that. It was just like, we're all here, we all love children, and we all need to figure out how to get this right. And so, it was a really, really good session for that reason. I had a chance also to meet Dr. Morris, Monique Morris. For those who may not know her, she's written a couple of books. One is called Push Out. Push Out talks about the criminalization of African-American girls in schools, and so it talks about the harsh discipline policies that are impacting some of our young girls of color. And she wrote another book that I can't think of all the title, but it was called The Education and the Liberation of Black and Brown Girls. And so, these are books I would suggest that you check out. We had a chance to see her. She's made a documentary called Push Out, so if you go out on YouTube and check that out, you could certainly check it out and see it. It's very, very good, and it just really makes you get fired up about the work that has to be done to make sure all of our children are safe and getting the things that they need. Leslie, did you want me to say the rest of my report at this time?
I can put you in your family order.
In the order? Okay, so let me make sure I got everything here. Oh, and I think that one of the things that really came out about the conference for me at the end, they used the phrase that "education is freedom work." And I had never heard that before, but when you think about making sure that children get a quality education, you are actually making sure that they have a chance to be free to live the life that they choose and reducing the likelihood that they will end up, you know, in some place that we don't want them to be. So again, I want to thank the community and my fellow board members for just allowing me that opportunity. I can assure you that I will take the things that I've learned and put them to work right here in this district. So thank you.
Thank you. [applause] At this time, Mr. Ebert.
Well, thank you, and nice to see everybody. Sheila, I just got a question. Did they mention, you might not, they might not have... I've always often wondered of the trafficking cases and the kid... Did they give you a statistic on how successful or unsuccessful? I mean, is it like 50% of these kids are found? Or any statistic? I've often wondered that.
So I do know that there are a lot of agencies out there that have, you know, come together and started doing this kind of work. They didn't give a statistic that particular day as to who is found, but a lot of it has to do with what we hear, "If you see something, say something." One of the issues is that they brought up, which I think is interesting, is that there is now this peer... What do they call it? Peer-to-pimp recruiting. And so, it used to be that a gentleman might approach a young person, kind of pretend like they wanted a romantic relationship with them, and then over time, find out that they actually wanted to use this child for trafficking. Well, now, those same people have younger children working for them, and so your child might think that a young person is attracted to them, and really, this is someone who's actually recruiting them. And so, I guess I said that, Scott, to just say that it's hard, I think, to get a number because everybody's got to speak up and say something. But I do know from something I went to a couple of years ago that there are some success cases out there, but definitely, I think, in our community, we need to be doing more than what we're doing.
I'd always heard, and that's what always scared me, you know, with my kids. I'd always heard that versus other crimes, that the success rate is so low on those. And I'd heard that a lot of it is due to it's... You know, they international, and as soon as they get them, you've got like a week, and then they're in some country, you'll never find them. So that's why I just was wondering, because it's a topic that's always been close to my heart as far as, you know, I wish as a nation would kind of stand up and do something about it.
And I'll do a little more research, but I do know that we... A clip was shared with us that the Attorney General, is it the Attorney General? I think for the state of Atlanta, or the state of Georgia, apparently, they have formed some sort of a task force. So I would think that the one for Missouri might be a part of that. So there's supposed to be some work done, I guess, at the national level to address that.
Well, I really don't have much this month, other than I want to thank the FFNEA for their social that I was invited to. I kind of thought, well, I'll run by and see what's going on, and my mistake was getting there at 5:30 because I missed a lot of people, and it was a lot of fun from 5:30 to, I don't know, about 7:00, I guess. And it's really neat when I have an opportunity to talk to people that are, you know, on... What do you always say, on the ground level, at the front lines or whatever, and hear all the good and the bad? But I guess I've, like, I've always made these stupid analogies. I still drive by these days in my old AT&amp;T truck and look up in July and say, "How do those roofers do that?" And I still say that about teachers. I have a hard enough time with the three that I have at home, so I can't imagine a classroom full, so I really had a great time there. Also, I've been to a... We had a community event around my house, and, you know, so I was ready to, shall we say, take the questions from the community, and I was telling Dr. Davis. It was pretty positive stuff. So I had a lot of people that were, shall we say, very negative about the grade breakups and things like that, and then, and now that their kids are in that, they actually maybe are getting used to it or actually kind of like it, they said. So we'll see how it goes going forward, but anyway, I just, again, I mean, it's been kind of a positive month for me, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert. Mr. Chabot?
Good evening, everyone. My report will be pretty brief. For some reason, Terry and Rich don't have a lot of stuff on the agenda, so... The big item is that they're sending out the RFP for companies to bring down the Waterford Buildings. So those will be going out on the 17th, and then it's going to be presented to the Board in November regards to that bid process. There's going to be a lot of... It's going to take a little bit of time because of what needs to be done, but that is moving forward. They have completed the move from the warehouse over to central office now, and that property's been turned over to MSD, so we no longer own that property. The Student Support Services, that's going over to vote, they're in the build-out process now, drywalling, putting a counter, things like that in. So Terry, when do you anticipate the move? Will it be after this semester?
Probably the end of this company next month.
When it'll finally be completed? Okay, great. Thank you. On technology, very quick note, they're just working with transportation right now to streamline the processes with the time clock, as well as the maintenance, the services that need to be done to the buses. Apparently, now, it's all pretty manual, so... Uh, apparently now it's all pretty manual, so they're working with them to kind of automate that, so. Um, beyond that, that's all I have, so thank you.
Dr. Sheila Powell Walker.
Okay, guys, I'm back. Um, all right, so, um, my portion is accreditation and achievement. Uh, principals and counselors receive check-in, checkout, professional development aligned to comprehensive, integrated, three-tiered intervention supports. Uh, and additionally, uh, addition team attended the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports International Conference. Um, we have here that, uh, there was, the first district leadership walkthrough was done on October the 7th at Halls Ferry Elementary. Uh, a reminder that parent conferences are next week, and so, you know, if you haven't already, uh, done so, make sure you, uh, take time to participate in those and, you know, get those set up. Um, finally, the instructional services and research and evaluation departments continue to team up to provide support and training on the new Galileo Imagine Learning Assessment System. I wanted to add a couple of things. On, uh, September 16th, I had a chance to attend the governing council meeting at Special School District's A- Administrative Office. For those of you who, who don't know what that is, the governing council consists of, um, board members who are a part of all of S- Special School District's partner districts. So of course, Special School Districts provide services in our district, so we would be a part of that. Uh, one of the things that came up that I wanted to mention tonight is that Ferguson Florissant School District needs more families, more parents, I should say, of children who receive services through Special, Special School District to participate on the Parent Advisory Council. And so our representative is Julie Collins Henderson, and so if you would have an interest in that, please see me after the meeting so I can assist you with getting connected. We need, we need voices from this community to sit on that council so that people understand the unique needs of Ferguson Florissant and our students who have special education needs. Um, I'd like to mention that Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, um, undertakes a number of initiatives every four years. Well, one of the initiatives now is called hashtag CAP. It's the college admissions process, and it's an opportunity for young people to come together once a month, and they receive mentoring and support. They participate in monthly workshops, they do field trips, and they have guest speakers. This is a free program, so if you know 11th and 12th graders that could benefit from some additional support with helping them get to college, then definitely see me about that after the meeting. And then my last thing is, I just want to mention that if you are a parent who has a child who receives services through Special School District, this is just a reminder of all of the phenomenal training that they have available for parents there. And so on October 23rd, there's an orientation for parents, uh, to help them better understand the special education and IEP process. On October 24th, there is one who have, for people who have children who are about to transition out of high school, and you're trying to figure out what that might look like, uh, that's an excellent opportunity for parents to go and learn about that. And then on October 19th, there's another one called Mindful Parenting, which focuses on self-care for parents while you are trying to care for your child who receives services through Special School Districts. So that is all, thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Good evening. I have the talent management update. Human Resource Services Department has an update, which includes the H- HR Service Department is getting started early on two fronts. The 2021 calendar and the possibility of looking at a new evaluation platform for teacher evaluations. Both of these initiatives are being worked on in committees in partnership with the FFNEA. We hope to have negotiations for both complete this fall. Next, the Safe Schools video. We currently have a committee looking at revamping the current Safe Schools offerings as the viewing time has increased to a little over four hours. Unfortunately, we are, uh, similar to our regional neighboring districts, but hope to find a way to decrease some of the viewing requirements for next year. And lastly, an update about, uh, HR data processing work. Some of the current projects going on include CSD core data reporting, researching options for integration between HR and applicant tracking systems, ongoing data improvement, developing of position control and vacancies processes with the finance department. And lastly, HR Information Systems Manager has been attending local Talent Ed user group in order to keep up on best practices and influence the direction of future features in the system that we use. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. I attended the MSBA convention in, it's not Ta- Tantera anymore, it's Margaritaville. And, uh, they've got lots of bright parrots everywhere. Um, one of my favorite, uh, sessions that I attended was given by the Superintendent of Schools in Kansas City, and it was on equity and, and equality, and how they have to go hand in hand. And then my other favorite was given by, uh, Kevin and Tiffany. They did an outstanding job and really, uh, showed what a great district we have and what talent we have, so I would like to thank both of them for giving a presentation. Um, I visited the vendors, and it's very interesting to get feedback from vendors on our staff. And the bus vendor couldn't say enough about Laura and Kevin and what an outstanding job they're doing and how easy and, uh, it is to work with them. Of course, our food service people love our Antonio and what a great job he does, and we appreciate him very much. I heard, uh, from contractors on Terry, and I don't want to leave anybody out, but I heard a lot of good things out there. So, um, keep up the good work, and we thank you very much for what you're doing. I also was in the, on the delegate assembly and, uh, represented our district in, uh, that process. Doug Irwin, I hate to put you on the spot, but we have a very special birthday this week, and could you lead us in singing happy birthday?
I can sing.
You can't sing?
He just had surgery.
Oh, well, can somebody else, because I'm always off key. We have a young man that is having a special birthday this ye- this week, Saturday, and we need to recognize him. Stand up. Come on, come on.
Y'all don't have to do this.
And I said no ba- black balloons.
I'll be 12.
[singing] Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dr. Davis. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
30 looks good. [laughter] No, it's all much better to be working. We call Matt Loeb the NEA representative, and if they would come forward, please.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Stacy Hendry, and I am a part of the FFNEA Exec Board, and, thank you. The Exec Board is having what we call listening tours, so we will be in every school listening to the members so we can bring forth those concerns to the, um, can't even read my paper. I'm sorry. Oh, to the, uh, negotiations team, I'm sorry. So we hope to have all of these meetings complete by the first of the month.
Good evening, Board, stakeholders. My name is Frank Green. I'm a technology specialist and, uh, member of the Exec Board for the Ferguson Florissant NEA. When we meet next month, we will be less than one year from the national election. As a matter of fact, right now, there are 390 days until the next, the next national election, and there are only 182 days before the board elections. So as a member of the FFNEA and speaking for the FFNEA, we encourage everyone to vote. We don't care who you vote for, what side you vote for, as long as you get out and vote. You can register at rockthevote.org, vote.gov, usa.gov. You can also go in person to the DMV, the state and county public, uh, assistance offices as well. As far as re- this, uh, the district reorganization, we know that it's been very, very stressful on everyone. The pressure is on, and it's not letting up soon, but we know that hopefully it will subside. The FFNEA is asking, because we know what stress and pressure does to people, changes folks, so we hope that there is some sort of kindness and respect to all members of the staff, especially ESP staff. We just want you to be safe and take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Thank you very much.
Dr. Davis.
Thank you, President Hawke said. Uh, thank you, everybody, uh, for the, uh, birthday wishes. I'll be 25 again, for the 25th time, so add up 25, 25. The big five-oh. Um, so, couple of things. One, I, I want to just respond a little bit to some of what the FFNEA just, uh, spoke about. Uh, we've been, you know, diligently building relationships with lots of partners around the area. Um, we have, uh, we're building a strong partnership with, um, uh, BJC, uh, Christian Northeast in particular. Uh, we've had several meetings already, and one of the reasons that we started this partnership in the ways that we have is specifically for adults. Um, and specifically thinking about the, um, the self-care that I often hear, um, adults talk about, that's really important. Um, and so we're working hard on building that relationship. Uh, we haven't got it all, um, you know, sort of baked out yet, but what I can tell you is that they are super excited about providing our adults, our teachers, our support staff, all the adults who work for the district, uh, some supports that we feel will be really helpful, uh, in dealing with difficult situations, personal situations, family situations, uh, because we know how important that is. So that'll be forthcoming, um, to give more details, uh, particularly to staff members about that, that support, so I appreciate you bringing that up. I also want to just recognize a couple of other partnerships that we're building. Um, you know, every year we have our, uh, Summer Institute, and it has been traditionally at Wash U. We did one year at UMSO with the partnership we have with them. Uh, we've just built a really strong relationship with SLU. In fact, I met with the, uh, Dean of the School of Ed just yesterday, Kevin Hampton and myself, with another, uh, gentleman, uh, out of Louisville, Kentucky. Um, and so we'll be having that institute this summer at SLU, uh, but they are super excited about a lot of the work that we've been talking about around equity. Um, that's a, that's a conversation that was pretty heavy as well at Cube. Uh, many school board members and superintendents across the country, black, white, uh, of all races, all creeds and colors, uh, talking specifically about what that looks like, uh, in their individual work, uh, as board members and collectively as school districts. So SLU has some, a couple of professors, uh, Jamie Welborn in particular, who's a professor there, um, she is leading a lot of that work now, so she, she will be a thought partner with us. We have a design team next week here in my office, uh, with many of them that'll be here, here, so we're excited about that work going forward. Uh, we had a chance last week, I think it was, to go to Boeing, and Boeing has, we, we actually tweeted out a picture. Uh, they are, I, I want to say more excited than I am, and I'm, it's hard to beat my excitement, but they're pretty excited about the, the relationship. Uh, because one of the things they talked about when we met with them just last week or not quite, uh, over a week ago, last Tuesday, I think it was, um, one of the things that was really, uh, exciting to me was, they said to us that we have, you know, a number of jobs right here in our backyard that start out paying 1950 an hour. And if you have a high school diploma and you go through a five-week course that they offer at, uh, St. Louis Community College, um, that you, if you successfully make it through that course, and, I mean, it's not easy, um, but if a high school diploma and completing that course, um, you can get a job at Boeing, uh, starting at 1950, $19.50 an hour. Uh, that's a pretty decent salary, uh, without anything beyond a high school diploma. Um, and the opportunities for advancement is even greater because after a year, they'll pay for you to go to school to get your degree. They will pay for it. They, we always talk about being debt-free or not having any college, uh, you know, debt. Um, and, and so what we're doing is building a pipeline, and we're starting with our students, so we'll have some externships for teachers. We're going to send some teachers to Boeing to work with, uh, some of the folks at Boeing to learn about what happens at Boeing. Uh, what, because it's more than just engineering. Engineering's a huge part of aerospace engineering in particular, uh, but there are so many other component parts of what goes on at Boeing. Um, and we will have teachers doing, uh, intern and externships. Uh, we have students doing shadowing and eventually some, uh, intern and externships as well, particularly at the Innovation School, but other high schools as well. Um, so I'm really excited about that. In fact, I got an email just today about our conference call we have set up for Monday, uh, to start making those plans. So they, they're pushing really hard, we're pushing really hard, uh, they're in our backyard. Um, and one of the pieces that I think emerged from that, and I say this often, and I say it to them, that we have to rebuild North County. It's not going to happen just because you say it, right? Like, we've got to do some tangible things. And one of the best ways, uh, as I heard a minute ago when Dr. Powell was talking about, education is, is liberating, is freedom. Uh, but we've got to put money back in our backyard. So we've got to have our, our students, their parents, working in jobs like that and bring money back into our community and cycle those dollars so that we can restore and rebuild and rebuild North County. So I, I'm really excited about, um, about those partnerships. A couple of other quick things. Um, we will have the State of the District address coming up on October 28th. Uh, I know earlier when, uh, Ms. Haxley was speaking, so we, so we have November 18th set for, um, the Advisory Council, and we're going to do it a little different, uh, because of some of the feedback I've gotten from parents and people who've been a part of it, and it'll be less of an agenda when it comes to me presenting and more of a conversation, uh, a fireside chat, if you will, or something along those lines, so that we can get out those concerns that parents are having. We've been diligently planning the October 28th meeting, which is State of the District. It'll be at MSB, um, on Oc- October 28th at 6:00 PM. Um, and so I invite all of you to come out, uh, communications. Kevin's department has sent out a lot of communications already, uh, so please put that date on your calendar. We'll give you an update on where we are with restructuring, uh, with APR, with, uh, everything, uh, to try to make sure our community, uh, is updated on, uh, where Ferguson Florissant is. Um, and then we'll follow up with you on the November 18th date for our Advisory Council meeting. Um, and then, uh, I think the last thing I'll say is, you know, uh, I've gotten a lot of pushback from, uh, some folks in the community around, uh, discipline. Um, and let me say that, you know, and this is me speaking, that, you know, I, I've listened to a lot, and I've tried to weigh it out, um, and we have a district discipline committee that we meet every Wednesday. In fact, we met today from 9:00 until about 2:30. Uh, Gary and I have been working diligently with schools and principals looking at discipline. And, you know, we don't, we want to support every child, and we're doing everything we can to support every child. Um, and we've had to, you know, uh, take a pretty solid stance on fighting because we've had some real issues that, you know, we, we cannot ignore. Um, and so I want to say that, you know, whatever you've heard or conversations that I've heard from you, comments, phone calls, emails, and I answer and, and read all of them, um, you know, we're going to continue to move forward with creating a safe space. And that means supporting all children, even the ones who are having the most difficult challenges. Um, we're going to do everything we can to support them. Uh, but we've got to make sure that our teachers are safe, our students are safe, and that we have a safe environment. Um, and, you know, I don't try to hide anything, um, but I know that's been a difficult piece that many of you have shared with me. And, and let me just say that, you know, uh, there are a few things that move me, and when children come to me and say things that concern them, a child's voice moves me. And I'm going to tell you that we got to make sure that children feel safe in every regard, the ones who are having the issues and the ones who are not. Uh, so I just want to say that, and I've been a little general because I don't want to get too specific, because I want to preserve schools and issues that have happened, but I just want to say that, you know, we, we were going to make sure we're supporting every child in the best ways that we can. It would be my hope that at some point when we get to a place where money isn't an issue, that we have so many resources available for every child. Uh, but until we get there, we're going to keep moving forward, supporting them in the best ways that, that we can and being prudent with our dollars. Um, so that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Davis and board members, for your reports. Declaration of candidacy, the three-year terms of Ferguson Florissant Board members, Rob Chabot, Dr. Donna Paulette Thurman, and Jessica Ponder expires April 2020. Declaration of candidacy may be picked up in the office of the superintendent at 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri, from 8:00 to 4:00 on the days the district is open. Under Missouri law, the first day to file as a candidate is Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. Filing closes at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. The school district offices will be closed Monday, December 20- The school district offices will be closed Monday, December 23, 2019, through Friday, January 3, 2020. The annual election for the Board of Education is Tuesday, April 7, 2020. A person who wishes to file for candidacy for the Board of Education must be a citizen of the United States, at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of the school district, a resident of the state of Missouri for at least one year. In addition, the candidate must follow these procedures. File a declaration of candidacy and filing pursuant to District Policy 4013. The Ferguson-Floreson School District Board Election in April 2020 will be conducted by cumulative voting. In cumulative voting, voters cast as many as there are seats. Voters are not limited to giving only one vote to a candidate. Instead, they can give their vote to one or more candidates. For instance, in this election, for three open, three open board seats, voters could choose to give one vote each to three different candidates. One vote to one candidate and two votes to another, or three votes to a single candidate. Consent agenda. Agenda item number eight. The administration presents the following items for approval under the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, would you please read the dispersments?
Payroll to include teacher and non-teacher, $7,588,528.47. Operational dispersment, $2,693,550.6 for a total of $10,282,078.53.
Could I please have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda item number nine, Read 180 and Systems 44, grades eight, six through eight, reading intervention.
Good evening.
Good evening.
During the 2018-2019 school year, Cross Keys Middle School and Ferguson Middle School piloted Read 180 and Systems 44 as a reading intervention. Read 180 is a research-based intensive reading program that significantly increases the reading achievement of struggling students two or more years below grade level. The program's instruction and practice activities align with Missouri state standards in the areas of phonemic awareness, phonics, syllabication, vocabulary development, fluency comprehension, spelling, writing and grammar, usage and mechanics. Systems 44 is a foundational reading program designed for the most challenged struggling readers in grades three through 12. Intentionally metacognitive, Systems 44 helps students understand that the English language is the phonite system of 44 sounds and 26 letters that can be mastered. We are asking the board to approve Read 180 and Systems 44 as the official district reading intervention for sixth through eighth grade students in the district. And the presentation provided breaks down how the blended learning model of whole group, small group, and independent learning. And it also provides the growth measures that we saw with our students who were in this program and how they advanced their lexile gains that they made.
Do I have a motion to approve Read 180 and Systems 44?
So moved.
Second. Do I have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, suspension of policy, appendix five, S, I'm sorry. Dr. Hazel?
Good evening. I'm going to ask Ms. Hendry, one of our dynamic teachers at the sixth grade center, to join me.
Thank you.
Wedgewood Sixth Grade Center is requesting to view the historical biographical movie Harriet. It tells the extraordinary journey of Harriet Tubman's escape from slavery and transformation into one of America's greatest abolitionists. According to policy, PG-13 movies can only be viewed with permission for students in ninth through 12th grades. We are requesting this policy be suspended so our sixth grade students at the sixth grade center at Wedgewood can go see the culturally relevant movie Harriet with parental consent.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Have you seen the movie yet?
I have not. I have seen the trailer.
It doesn't come out until November 1st.
It's called Harriet.
Yeah, I've seen the trailer too. So we really don't know the violence, sexual assault, what, we don't know anything about the movie. So why is it that you're bringing it to us now before the movie's released when it hasn't been reviewed versus first reviewing it? Because, I mean, when you're changing curriculum, you're buying a new textbook, you review it, right? Before you bring it to us for approval. So why are you jumping ahead on this one?
I think the date that they had requested to go was the 7th.
So I remember also, there was some support that was coming in, that they had to, there was a deadline for getting, to pay for the kids to go. There was some additional support that was coming forward. They had to do it before a certain time.
Right. So, we're trying to go to the Marcus Theaters, and so the dates are filling up. And so the lady that I worked with said that the 7th would be the time that our pod could go. We're actually trying to see that all of the pods at Wedgewood could go, and then maybe pass it to JW so they can do the same thing. But because of being out in November, we thought that the 7th would be the first time that we could go for our pod. And then the other pods would follow suit the next days.
So you're going to ask for parental consent, so you're going to send a form. Without reviewing the movie, you know what's in the movie. We know what it's about, but we don't know really what's in it. How can you ask parents to give consent? So like, for me, if you came to me and my child, my child was sixth grade, I would like to know that the movie that the district is recommending that we support and send them to, this movie's going to have, you know, violence, it's going to have murder, it's going to, sexual assault. These are things as a parent, we would want to know before we sign that little piece of paper. So how are you going to do the consent form?
Do we know the rating?
It's a PG-13.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I missed that.
I mean, I can read, like, according to the rating, but somebody would need to view it then before the parental consents go home. And I think it comes out November 1st, October 31, actually, maybe.
Right.
Would putting, would putting it off hinder any of the funding or support that you would receive for the kids to be able to go?
No, it wouldn't. It just would be just the dates. We were just thinking that it came out on the 1st, and then possibly the kids would have already seen it with their parents. So we just wanted to see if we could do it as a school, but we can always do it at a later date. And it's, like I said, it's up to us just being able to contact the person at Marcus Theaters to make that date.
And to get the funding that you're looking for?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I think I just want to say myself that I don't really have a problem with the students going to see it on the day that you have selected. I know that we will, as a board, will vote, and that will be what we'll have to go with. But I personally don't have a problem with it. I've seen the trailer, I know the history of Harriet Tubman, and I think there's definitely more good to be gotten out of it than bad. I also think that if parents give their consent, then that's parents giving their consent. You know, I don't, and I think there's a lot of history there for, you know, for our students, you know, to benefit from. One of my concerns, not to get on a soapbox, is that we don't teach the history of African-Americans in this district from, from when they were kings and queens in Africa, before they became colonized and brought over here and all of that. So I think that children need to see empowering stories about people who look like them, who overcame, because everything that they're being taught, for the most part, lets them know that you are beneath, you are below. You know, so, so I applaud you for thinking about even wanting to take them to have that experience, and certainly will vote as a board, but that's, those are my thoughts on it.
Can I just read a few of the things that my students say? Okay. So I asked them to tell me why.
Reflect, these are the reasons why students want to go. Reflecting on the hardships of slavery, comparing them to the hardships of the African-Americans present today. So children talked about that. Children also wanted to go because it shows strong, courageous, confident African-American Shows African-Americans in a positive light. And one student said she's very important to our past. Another student said she gives us someone to look up to.
And so, that's important, because we did timelines, and they don't have, I'm sorry. They didn't have a goal in life. And so it moved me so much to, I asked people from the community to help me. And so you'll be getting an email to attend our speaker series once a month. So this is one of the reasons why, sorry, that I wanted to send my kids to see this movie, so.
I agree with Sheila 100%, and trust administration. Again, I use that word ambush, but if the movie ambushes us, we can always change direction. But I too have studied Harriet Tubman, and I think it's an awesome story, so, you know.
I would, I'm sorry, Rob, I mean, were you done, Scott? I just wanted to add on that, that I would ask, though, that, that, you know, as Rob has stated, there may be some things in there that could be a little questionable, because it is a PG-13 movie. So I would just ask that as a staff, you have a plan to sort of unpack those things and help children understand them, and be very transparent with families about some of the content that children have been exposed to. But I definitely think it's a great idea, and you, you are crying and saying you're sorry, but I so appreciate your passion, because that's what that says to me, that you are passionate about your babies, and that's what we need.
And I agree with what's been said, and I think if the parents aren't in favor of it, then that's, that's their choice and their decision. So I think that's great, and I appreciate you going forward with this. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. 2019 Summer School Evaluation. Dr. Bland?
The purpose of this program report is to update the Board of Education on the 2019 Summer School program. During the summer of 2019, we offered summer school for elementary, middle, and high school students. This evening, we want to share information with the Board of Education to show the success of the program. Students were able to increase reading and math achievement at elementary and middle school based on pre and post-assessments. High school underclassmen recovered credit to improve their chances for success in the 2019-20 school year, as well as position themselves to be near or back on track for cohort graduation and generation of ADA. Funding increased total district funding. So at this time, I am going to ask the summer school leaders to share with us information regarding their specific areas. And first, I'll have Ms. Lauren Rebert come forward.
So elementary summer school enrolled students in grades three through four that were reading below grade level by two or more years. We had instruction that included 90 minutes of math, 90 minutes of reading, and 30 minutes of enrichment every day. We also had a PBIS program that acknowledged both behavior and attendance. The elementary summer school is located at Johnson-Wabash between June 5 and July 2, from 8 to noon, and we did provide free breakfast and lunch every day for both families and As far as the curriculum and instruction, we did have input training before summer school began, and then weekly teachers did attend professional development around the curriculum and instruction. For ELA, we used Fanta's and Pennell, as well as SIPS program to provide small group instruction. Each classroom had leveled classroom libraries for students to access daily. In mathematics, we use corrective math and use the workshop model for instruction. We did have one-to-one technology for students, and so we, all students every day utilized Imagine Literacy, as well as Imagine Math and Imagine Math Facts. So here's a picture of our growth, using Imagine Literacy for the reading and Imagine Math for our math. In reading, there was growth of, they used a scale score, and so this is just with Imagine, how they monitor growth. But there was growth in reading, as well as in math, by percent of students from their pre to the post-test. And then the program, as I mentioned earlier, offered 30 minutes every day for enrichment opportunities for students. So we had vendors, these six vendors from outside in the community, St. Louis Public Library, Home Depot came and did workshops, hand-on work with our students. Workshop, St. Louis Public Library provided some Lego activities. Science Center came, which is shown in the picture here. World Bird Sanctuary brought several birds, including a bald eagle. Chess came Monday through Thursday, and Girl Scouts was once a week for all of our girls. As well as inside the classroom, so these were the entire summer school program, engaged in these activities every Friday, except for chess and Girl Scouts, which were throughout the week. And then in the classrooms, teachers provided their own enrichment for students, so they were given experiences that they may not experience outside of instruction, such as yoga. Guest speakers were brought in, they did poetry slams, science experiments. And then the rest of these are just a few pictures from their enrichment activities that we had during the program. And this last picture was the last day of school. All the students that had met their attendance goal received a T-shirt. And so this is all of our staff and students on that last day, and then everyone in a T-shirt made their goal. Thank you.
And now Mr. LaRue and Dr. Irwin will come up and share information regarding middle school.
Good evening. The middle school program was housed at Cross Keys Middle School. We serviced 228, or 286 total students. We offered them instruction in four areas, science, math, reading, and English Language Arts. Classes were approximately 50 minutes. We had 16 teachers providing instruction. The program was a half-day, Monday through Friday. We, our stated goal was to provide targeted instruction for students identified as needing more time to meet learning goals in ELA math and science, which is why we targeted those areas. Students did travel in cohorts. The teachers in the program did, were provided input training to assist them in instruction, utilizing a variety of resources. As I said, we had 286 total students enrolled this year from all three middle schools. We did not turn any students away. We had all, all four middle schools, excuse me. All four middle schools. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Irwin, or Dr. Irwin, excuse me, I want to take his title away.
So I realized the first day, it had been 17 years since I taught middle school, and it took about three minutes for those muscles to come back. I do want to thank the APs who I learned a ton from, and they were just fantastic. So I had, I was blessed with an amazing staff, and if you'll notice, we showed huge growth. These were our darlings who'd been unsuccessful in four of six classes. So the growth that we showed in all four areas is just a testament to how outstanding our teachers were. We had 91% of our kids in seventh grade showing growth in ELA and 86% in eighth grade, and you can see the huge growth in eighth grade, though, from 27.4 to 85.2. I mean, it was just amazing. And we had something similar in reading, and that was leveled out. We had 91 and 94% of our kids showing growth. The program was just absolutely outstanding, high-interest novellas that the kids wanted to read. We also showed huge growth in math. Those teachers were fantastic, and the pre and post-test data- Uh, those teachers were fantastic and the pre and post-test data, you can see the growth that we achieved there. And even in science, we had 79% of our seventh graders and 90% of our eighth graders showing huge growth. So I was thrilled with the work the teachers were able to accomplish from the kids and really showing that it was more of a will issue than a skill issue. And we also housed two programs at Cross Keys. We had a program for our McKinney-Vento kids, pre-K through eight. Those kids also, uh, got, were coming in from the Science Center. They went on several field trips. And then we had a summer enrichment program for Maryville University. And I'm gonna hand things over to Mr. Tandler for the high school program.
You, you said that they traveled in cohorts?
They did teams.
How many were in a team?
Well, they were evenly split. There were two seventh grade teams of four teachers each and then two eighth grade teams of four teachers each.
And how approximately, how many, how many, uh, students were in that, those teams?
It was, whoops, way back. Uh, it was, it was an even split. So we had about 70 to 80 in seventh grade and about the same in eighth grade.
Thanks.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeff Tandler and I had the high school summer program. Um, we were in session from June 5th into July 2nd. We had a morning program and an afternoon program. The morning one started at 7:30 and went to 11:15. The afternoon started at 12:45 and went to 2:45. Um, the biggest goal was for students who were not successful during the school year to, uh, recover credit and then also to offer enrichment to students who are looking to work ahead. Right? Um, above is kind of a credit disbursement of credits that were earned. So, um, in summer school, we had 733 high school students that were enrolled. Um, and that 733 students earned 361 credits. Um, the majority of students earning credits back were our underclassmen. Um, last year, the high schools did a really good job of getting our seniors, um, to graduate. So during this summer school program, the focus wasn't so much on trying to, um, work on senior graduation for August as most of our seniors graduated. The big focus was trying to get all of our kids back on track and really focusing on the juniors so that they are on track with this year's cohort. Thank you.
And that's the summer school enrollment. 1,209 students were serviced, uh, this summer. Alright. Uh-oh. Why did you just press? So we also received a McKinney-Vento grant and with that grant, we were able to, uh, provide service to 87 students and, um, fund seven teachers and those students, uh, received enrichment. Um, it was students who signed up for the program. There was no specific criteria other than, these were students who met criteria for McKinney-Vento. Uh, they went on field trips, site visits, um, and so it was more of an enrichment opportunity for those students. We also had our Maryville Young Scholars Program and, um, this is a program we've had for a few years. It is also funded through a grant and we had in our district about 28 students. Um, and the grant is, uh, in partnership with Maryville. And we also have t- three other, uh, school districts who also utilize our facilities for the, uh, Young Scholars Program. Uh, the focus of the program is to prepare students who, um, are underrepresented in gifted education and to give them those experiences, uh, to help them qualify eventually for gifted education in fifth grade. Uh, this is our budget for summer school. Um, as you can see, the budget was 2,000, 298,588 dollars. And the actual budget was 277,677. And if you notice that, um, if you look at certified salary and benefits, so we increased the number of teachers, which allowed us to decrease class size. Um, but we also decreased the, um, budget for materials and supplies. We had a budget of 120,000, but we, uh, were at 34,000 because what we decided to do was just continue utilizing curriculum and work that we already had in our schools and to utilize that same curriculum for summer school and customize it for the needs of our students. So, um, our total was 166,280, I'm sorry, was 277,677 dollars. But we also, um, with our ADA, summer school revenue was at 166,285 dollars. So we absorbed 111,392 dollars, which was expected to incur as a summer school expense. Are there any questions?
Um, I wanted to just say first that, um, I want to thank you guys for all your hard work this summer and for bringing this information forward. We always hear about kids going to summer school and we just sort of assume that they did good, but I'm just really glad to hear that you guys have the numbers to prove that they actually did do good. Um, I wanted to ask if you could, cause I'm not sure if everybody knows what McKinney-Vento is and why it might not have, why, why it might be such a big deal for those kiddos to have that extra support and exposure to those opportunities this summer.
So McKinney-Vento are those students who qualify as homeless in our district. And so many of those students in the summer don't necessarily have a place, a safe place, um, during the summer because school is not available to them. So what we did provide for them was from, um, eight to 12, a space where they can get a meal, a lunch and also those opportunities and experiences that you were referring to earlier.
Yeah, and I would probably add to that, that children who, who find themselves in a homeless state often miss school and move around a lot, so they miss some opportunities at instruction. So I just really think that's an excellent, like, use of that money to try to, uh, meet the needs of those kids and kind of help them get to where they need to be. So that's all I have, thank you. Oh, I do want to ask, I saw that there was pre and post and I, I do want to hear a little bit about what pre and post tools, like what did you use, uh, to help you measure the growth for kids? And I don't need to hear them all, I just like one or two.
Do you want?
So we were changing testing platforms as that occurred. Uh, so the pre-test, the teachers wound up doing both. Um, and then we wound up using the Galileo test when it was, uh, implemented as a post-test. Although we also had some teachers do Lexile levels for reading and I actually ran the stats on both and then cross-applied them. But, um, we had some of our librarians teaching reading, which was fantastic. Um, and one of our theater teachers and it's kind of nice for people to get out of their comfort zone. But we used the new Galileo platform primarily in middle school.
It's our new testing system that we have. Well, assessment system that we're utilizing. Alright. Thank you.
Good evening, Board and community members and colleagues. Uh, you would have been very pleased to hear Tiffany share, uh, at the Lake, uh, at the MSBA conference. She did a phenomenal job. It's no wonder that she is speaking to education groups around the country. Uh, I'd like to just, uh, bring you up to speed. You know that, um, uh, our district has over the last two-plus years undertaken work towards a graduate profile. And it's based on our vision and our mission. And, um, there were four phases to this process. The first was to engage stakeholders. Some of that happened in this room. It happened in various community, uh, meetings around the district. Um, and we formed an advisory committee made up of a variety of folks who I'll share with you in just a moment. Then we developed a profile and, uh, we're at phase four here where we're formally adopting, uh, hopefully this evening, uh, this graduate profile graphic that will be the graphic organizer for, uh, the graduate profile work going forward. Uh, those stakeholder groups were made up of students, parents, staff, university, uh, employees, uh, and faculty, uh, and members of business. You've heard through, um, the board updates and through Dr. Davis's update and various pieces that have been shared from this podium this evening, uh, the various partnerships that we have and the various people who, um, we impact and who have expectations on our, um, graduates and what they are capable of doing, uh, when they leave us. And so, uh, we also know that it's important for students to have a voice in their own, uh, experience. And so, uh, we didn't make decisions about students without their input. And you can see in these photos here, I won't give you the 50 minutes that we did at the lake, but, um, we met in here, uh, there were elected officials and a variety of other folks who came and participated in those conversations, uh, sharing their thoughts, helping us, uh, distill out the, um, the essential pieces of what we want students to be able to do, um, the competencies that we want them to be able to, uh, embody as they, uh, leave us as graduates. And so, uh, the group of folks came together and, uh, there's, uh, one of the evenings. Uh, what they, um, did was look at, by the time a student's grad, student graduates, what do we want them to be able to do? And then began to work on backwards mapping. You know, if you, um, have ever done any kind of shooting at a target, even if it's a paper wad, that, uh, uh, you're much more likely to hit something if you have something to shoot at. And so this, um, graduate profile graphic, the graduate profile itself, helps take all of the pieces that we, um, expect students to do and learn over the course of their 13-plus years that they're in our system and distills it down to, uh, something that's easily, uh, visually available to them, but also, um, helps create, uh, some form to the, um, the work that we, that we do. Uh, it would be difficult to sit and go through all of the things that the instructional folks do and list that out. This takes and creates something that's easier for us to describe. Through these, uh, this work, uh, these five competencies emerged. Communicator, collaborator, innovator, citizen and mastery learner. And we've shared that with you, uh, before. After we came up with those competencies, then, uh, folks in the group, uh, in groups, uh, prepared a variety of graphic organizers to show that. We've shared those, uh, with you and we shared the three finalists with you. Um, and I'll share the results of that after I, uh, show you this, uh, one that emerged as the preferred, uh, profile organizer for, um, for the district. This is based on our, uh, district logo. You know that, um, when we adopted this new logo, um, there were several pieces of it that were important. It was rooted in the history of the district's logo that starts all the way back to, uh, the wagon wheel of westward expansion and the, um, and the airplane, uh, from the airfield that was here in the district back many years ago. Over time, that became a more stylized wing and loop. Um, and this new logo that we have now that's on the wall behind you, um, shows the, um, the, that nod to history, um, but a new trajectory. Um, and, uh, you know that Boeing is also involved with, uh, supporting space exploration. And so that wing has become a rocket ship based on a foundation of reading. The other piece that's really important to this new logo, um, was, um, something that came out of the conversations with community members when we began to discuss it. And that was, there needed to be something to acknowledge that we are not just Ferguson and Florson, but that we are nine communities that, uh, make up this district. And so there is a star representing each of the communities that are a part of Ferguson and Florson School District. The, um, preferred profile took five of those stars and, uh, those stars represent one of the competencies. And so that's communicator, collaborator, innovator, citizen and mastery learner. And, um, with that, um, this organizer will be something that we'll be able to use, we'll have on the website. People can go to it and see what are the, um, performance tasks that students will do to demonstrate those pieces? What are the assessments that we'll give? And how will we know that by the time, uh, student graduates, that the work that they have done all the way from pre-K through graduation has led them to, uh, develop in those five areas? We put these, um, the top three choices to a vote. You can see that, um, that logo that I just shared with you was, uh, a little over 8% ahead of the second placement, which was, um, the light bulb base one. And then the third one was the hand-holding the globe. But this, uh, was the one that certainly gained, uh, the largest favor among over, uh, 1,400 respondents who, uh, voted on those logos. So based on that, administration recommends that the board adopt the graduate profile graphic based on the district logo as I just presented it to you.
This is for board action. Do I have a motion to accept this graphic? Second. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Boyd. Building level A-plus coordinator, extra pay position.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Uh, for your recommendation tonight, we are seeking to, uh, install, uh, extra pay positions for A-plus coordinators in our comprehensive high schools. Uh, these positions typically had been full-time positions. Uh, and so we've been trying to be, uh, we were trying to be more strategic and figure out if we can fiscally, um, create some differences in how we're supporting students through the A-plus program. So we are looking to have, uh, this is an A-plus, the A-plus, uh, support as an extra pay position instead of a, a full-time position. So you're seeing a, uh, pretty much a six-figure reduction in costs in terms of the A-plus coordination if we, if you, uh, approve this, uh, these extra pay positions.
Could I please have a recommendation to approve the building level A-plus school coordinator? Second. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to ask, um, it, it sounds like this is a move that's being made that's gonna definitely save the district money. Um, but do we have a way to measure the difference between, uh, I guess the results we were able to create before versus what this, this model will be? Does that make sense?
It does, it does. Uh, I don't know if I can answer that question fully at this time. Uh, I think that in looking at, um, the data that we have for, for students that were successful in being able to obtain an A-plus designation, we should have some longitudinal data to share with the board probably by, by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Dr. Sheila Powell Walker. Any other que- any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Dr. LaRue, suspension of policy 4051, regular meetings.
Good evening. The administration is recommending the suspension of policy 4051, the regular meetings to hold the November 13th, regular board meeting on November 6th. Uh, this request, uh, is due to the fourth Wednesday. If you think about the fourth Wednesday of the month in November, it will fall on the, uh, day before Thanksgiving. Uh, so this would allow that two-week interval, uh, between, uh, the, uh, the first week, then on the 6th, uh, to the week before Thanksgiving. So the, uh, recommendation is to, uh, sus- suspend the policy, uh, 4051 for that purpose.
That's quite alright. Any other, uh, questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Oppo- opposed? Okay. So motion carries. Um, Dr. LaRue, before we adjourn, could you tell us the baseball score, please?
13 to 1, it's over.
It's over? Yay! Alright. So at this time, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a good week.